Person. And it's our custom to begin our hearings with the Pledge of Allegiance, after which we will observe a brief moment of silence for our active servicemen and women. So I believe our town enforcement officer has the ability to put up the flag for us for the pledge. All right, there we go. So if you join with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. We'll begin our hearings tonight with a continued public hearing for property of 4611 Dual Road. The applicant is seeking an area variance to erect an accessory structure 60 feet from a water course when 100 feet is the minimum, a 40-foot stream setback area variance is being sought. So Mr. Beckwith?
Can you hear me?
We can now. Go ahead. Please talk about what you'd like to do.
Oh, I want to build a pole barn. I have to have it over 12 foot six high ceiling height. I have a car lift on my mother's farm. She passed away last year. I inherited the house and I got to bring my lift over here. I need a pole barn to put it in. Problem is, is that stream splits my property right down the middle. The only place I can put it with the least amount of encroachment on that 100-foot setback is where I show on that site map. It's going to be, how would I have it? It's 1,280 square feet. I have to be over 1,000 square feet to have the taller, over 12-foot ceiling height. So it was 980 or something like that, 960. And the building inspector told me to add a shed roof on the side to get the square footage up to allow for the higher ceiling. So that's, you know, I started this back in February. Had it surveyed and whatnot, and it's been a learning process as far as, you know, the ceiling height. I didn't realize there was a requirement of over 1,000 square feet to have over 12-foot ceilings. So I modified it and updated the paperwork. And on the one side, I get about 60, was it 60 feet, 65 feet? I don't have my papers here. What did the surveyor put on that?
The surveyor shows Mr. Beckwith that the closest point, it's 60 feet to the, to the water course.
That's on the south side. 63, yeah, the 63 to the stream there and 62 on the backside, right? You know, I've lived here all my life. This is all part of my parents' farm and, you know, we've never did any, any sort of contamination to that creek. I don't plan on it. I'm just going to use the barn for like storing my vehicles and working on my vehicles. There's no floor drain in it. There's no like, I don't just, there's no oil being spelled or dumped. As far as the runoff on the roof, I put gutters on it and it would just be diverted down onto the backside of the lot and just naturally run off or be absorbed into the lot. The house has foundation drains all the way around it, inside and out, and that also just runs out down lower on the hill somewhere. I remember when they put it in, it just comes out. Oh, I think it was like 20 or 30 feet away from the creek. It was just groundwater that would be coming through there. Below the house, on the backside of the house, there was this foundation drains just go down below and I think they come right out somewhere down over the hill. Well, like I say, that's all groundwater there and there won't be any contamination coming from my pole barn. So you know, I understand why the DEC protects that stream because mint teeth is the only trout stream that they spawn in, in Canadega. So, no, I don't want to contaminate it anymore, for sure.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Beckwith, for kind of explaining a little bit of your application. Our custom and procedure is we generally start with questions from the board and then we'll go to questions from members of the audience because this is a public hearing and then we'll come back to you for any follow-up that you may want to provide. But at all times, our questions and discussion with both you and with members of the audience, it's with the board. It's not between numbers of the, of the public.
Okay.
So let's, you know, start with the board. What questions do you have on this application or discussion would you like to have with Mr. Beckwith?
Have we, have we received any feedback from neighbors or anything along that line?
Have I? No, I haven't.
No, I'm actually referring to the board itself.
No, we've not. There's nothing in our file on that unless there's something recent. Chris Jensen, anything recent?
So we have not received any communications. Also, if it's possible, I'd like to add that the reason for the 100-foot setback is usually for flooding the stream and erosion and everything like that. Mr. Beckwith, I believe the proposed accessory structure is at least 20 feet higher in grade than the stream below it.
Yeah, approximately.
It's way up there. Yeah. I have a question. The, on the ECB report, they, they recommended or suggested what they called a robust soil, soil erosion control. That's what they said was needed and they suggested a buffer with trees and shrubs. I can't, I don't know what you have between the proposed pole barn and, and that. So I guess I, I'm not quite sure what they had in mind and I can't see it. Maybe you could help me, Mr. Beckwith.
Yes, they, I believe it was the DEC suggested a 10-foot sloth of trees on both sides of the creek, trees or shrubs, and to put ground cover around the bank of the berm where the pole barn would be, which I have no problem doing. I've talked to the cooperative extension about getting some trees in the spring. To plan along there, this, this used to be just a haylot for 40 years.
Yeah.
Until my mom put this house in here and I've let it grow up down below. I'm going to let it grow back to, you know, trees and whatnot. So yeah, I have no problem planting trees and shrubs and ground cover around the pole barn on the steeper parts.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from anyone on the board? All right. Any questions from anyone in the audience on this application? Once again, anyone can comment or ask questions about any application. We just ask that those comments or question be directed to the board since this is our public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak to this application? Okay. Any final questions from the board? Well, Mr. Beckwith, I'm going to ask you if you're comfortable closing your application. I'll just explain for everyone tonight what that means because it's a little bit of a procedural question. When the application is closed, we're closing the public hearing portion of our meeting for your application and it means that there's no longer any additional submission of information or comment. Rather, we close the application and then we'll move to deliberations later tonight on each application and during those deliberations, while they're open to the public, the public does not participate in those deliberations in any way. It's just the board. So, Mr. Beckwith, I'm going to ask if you're comfortable closing, knowing that that's the end of your opportunities to submit any additional information. Are you comfortable closing your application?
I have one more thing to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I grew up on the farm. My, my mom died last year and I just sold it. But this little stream used to dry up every year until my father dug a couple ponds over on the farm next door and, and that spring fed, which overflowed into the creek, which is, it's clean spring water coming in there. And now it runs eight or nine months out of the year just because of the pond overflow. So, um, yeah, there's the two ponds. So my dad put them in. And then, you know, that's, that's why it runs over six months a year now.
Great. Well, with that, we will close. We do have 62 days to render a decision after we close a public hearing. But, Mr. Beckwith, we invite you to remain online if you'd like and listen to our deliberations later this evening.
Okay.
We'll go to our next application. This is for property at 4495 Davidson Landing, property owned by Daniel Gill. The request is for an area variance for building coverage.
So this is David Anlon. I'm speaking on behalf of Dan and Debbie Gill, architects for the project. And I think we've resubmitted plans and some rendering exhibits to the town board or the zoning board. And so we've come back with a revised submission. We've listened to the board's comments and feel that we've made a good effort at addressing those concerns and have resubmitted in the drawings that you'll see tonight. And I thought, you know, Dan and Debbie wanted to speak a few words. They can also speak to our efforts.
Before we do, if we could, David, why don't you just walk us through the metrics of what you're requesting? I think it's helpful for the board as you present what the request was last month.
Okay.
Request is now, and just a brief highlight of the changes. I mean, obviously you've removed the, the one structure that's there as part of the current plan, but just walk everyone through that. So we're all up to speed.
Okay. So our initial application was for a variance for building coverage. All the other aspects of the envelope were, were within town zoning ordinance law. What last application had variance of 19.7% coverage when 15% is allowed. A large, a large part of that was due to overhangs, porches. We took the guest house, which was at the southwest corner of the property, which had been there for a long time. The, you know, Dan's dad built that. We had a connecting bridge to that as well. So we, we took that off. We're taking that off. That would be demolished. And so we reduced the footprint down to what is now a 16.9% building coverage. Also that, you know, opened up the south side of the property. We kind of balanced the house within the site. So it's kind of equal. The, the length of the house was quite drastically reduced. So now we're less than 50% of the width of the lot. So what you see up there on the screen is the, the new footprint. That 16.9% coverage of that, 1.9% of that is the green roof over the southern or the eastern side porch. Yeah, that's a good exhibit. So that kind of shows you the character of the house now that we're submitting. That the overhangs constitute, you know, the, the variance that we're asking for because we tried to keep the house low, but in the architectural nature of the house, it has some horizontal elements to it. In those horizontal elements, we, we punched holes and tried to pull them back as much as possible. And like I said, on the roof facing the lake, we've made that into a green roof. So as you look down from a bird's eye, there's actually, you know, 15% of, of building coverage if you look at it that way. Also beyond the green roof, we, there, there, it's a fairly environmentally sensitive approach as I were doing geothermal heating system here as well. We're using a lot of, pretty much all natural materials on the facade, cedar and stone and along with the glass. So that's the update. That view that's up there now, it shows that amended south area. So you see we pulled back and it kind of shows you to the transparency of the porches and the overhangs. So even though it's at 16.9%, the building itself is only 13.6% of the, the building coverage, the footprint of the enclosed spaces. So that's, that's a quick overview. Chairman, I don't know if that's enough and I can let Dan and Debbie speak and then Lucas can also go over the site.
Oh, it's, it's Terrence and that's fine. I think that's good. That I think was great.
So Dan and Debbie, I don't know if you want to speak a few words and then Lucas can give some more detail?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think, David, you covered some of the things that I was going to say, you know, we, we listened to, to all the discussion last time and tried to address the concerns and sort of, you know, with the green roof, get under the 15% threshold. Again, this is a property that's, you know, been in my family a long time. My wife and I have been going there 30-plus years and, you know, we're, we're certainly endeavoring to build a, a house in keeping with the, the lake and the neighborhood and, you know, appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
I don't know if Lucas, you want to add anything to that as well? Sorry to Terrence interrupt, but didn't know if there's any, any site data, Lucas, that we missed on our application.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just throw in a few more items to add. Obviously, as, as David had mentioned, the, the variance request we're asking for has been essentially chopped in half. We're now 40% of the original request of what we had submitted. He touched on the green roof and sort of the, the balance of enclosed areas to outdoor areas that comprise the building coverage. Two other things that, that have happened with these updates is improvements to some existing non-conformities. So the first of which is the, the sign setback to the south. It was previously an existing non-conformity with, with the existing, with the existing cottage. And now it's been increased to a point where it's now in compliance. So we've, we've eliminated one non-conformity with this, with this update. And similarly, the front setback has been increased by about 10 feet by eliminating that cottage. So that, that is an existing non-conformity. It's still there today, but it's been significantly approved. It's about four times what it was previously. And then in terms of site coverage, this, this revision also had a positive impact on lot coverage. So we've talked about building coverage and lot coverage is an existing non-conformity, but that we're originally improving by 2% and now we've improved it by about another 2%. So, so those are the sort of the, the other pluses to, to the revisions that we've gone through and made. David, I think you touched on everything else. So if there's anything else to add, that's all I got.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to the board. Any questions from the board on this application? All right. And we'll go to the public now. Any comments on this application from anyone who's attending the hearing tonight?
If anyone has comments, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, seeing none. We'll go back to the board. I'll just say from my perspective, I think this plan is, is very well done. I appreciate the revisions. I think a lot of effort has been put in to bring it closer in compliance with the code. I would appreciate if you could just repeat for me, David. I didn't jot it down quick enough. Your current plan now, you're at 16.9, but what percentage is the green roof?
The green roof is 1.9% of that. So that
Brings us exactly to 15 then, right?
Yeah, correct. Yeah. And then the building itself is at 13.6. So the remaining 1.4 is those other overhangs.
So one of the things we look for, you know, are differentiating facts that distinguish this project from others. And I think that that is one, that this green roof, in my mind at least, is a, is a key thing, that it brings you down exactly to the number that we would normally be looking for. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Well, for the Gills or David or Lucas, we're going to ask now if you're comfortable closing the application.
I am, as long as Dan and W, you're comfortable?
We are.
All right. Great. Well, that will close. As I said before, the board has 62 days to render a decision, but we generally vote the same evening we hear applications. Our next application is for property at 3592. Sorry, I just closed my agenda. 3592 Middle Cheshire Road. The applicant is seeking an area variance for addition with a side yard setback of 16 feet when 25 feet is required and a front setback of 25.6 feet when 60 feet is required. So Mr. and Mrs. Blewett, who would like to speak to this application?
My name's Richard Crop. I'm the architect for the project representing the Blewets. And just to explain a little bit about what we're doing, the addition, the dotted area is a one-story garage addition, which is really, the side yard is really the, the issue here. We would be at a setback of 16 feet, looking for a nine-foot variance there. This property, something changed since the house was built and the, I think it was that now the set, front yard setbacks taken from the right of way rather than the road. So the, currently, the front yard setback is, is literally behind the house. And so that's why we're looking for such a large number for the front yard setback. But really, it's just that little piece that extends from the existing house out to that dotted line for the patio. That's really the, what we're, what we're, what's at issue here. I'm not sure what happened along the way to make that back, front yard setback land behind the house. But that's the, the reasoning for the large number there.
Richard, what is that distance from the corner of the house, you know, out to the patio? What's the width of that patio?
That's about roughly six feet, five to six feet.
And then you're saying that there was a change, the right of way or the, excuse me?
I'm assumed, I'm assuming that. I, I don't know for sure, but the right of way currently, or the, the front yard setback currently is taken from the right of way line. And you can see, if you look at the back of the house, that's the, that dotted line going across the property that is where the setback, that's the 60 feet front yard setback. That's where it actually is. But obviously, that's, you know, that's an unusual situation.
Chris Jensen, can you give us any insight on that issue about the, a change in the measurement of the setbacks, the front setbacks?
There really isn't any change in the front setbacks. It's, it's to the right of way as far as how the code's written. What they are, they're going from 27 feet to their existing patio in front of their house and they're going to 25.6. So there's only a, a 1.4-foot change in front setback from that 27 here to the 25.6.
Right.
Okay. All right. And then that side setback, we're looking at about nine feet, right?
Right. And that, that area to the, I guess that would be the south where the, that, that's wide open area. There's not a building near that, that property line. So and the, and as far as I know, the neighbors are, are okay with the addition.
Yeah, nothing's been submitted from anyone else other than the applicant on this variance request. So let's go to the board. What questions does the board have for the Blewets or for Richard?
I guess the only question, is, is there a, there's like a driveway that goes, it's on the south side, correct?
Yes, that driveway, right?
Okay. And then it goes behind the house or that goes?
It goes to the side of the house. There's currently nothing there. And so that area, as I remember it, that driveway goes all the way to the back of the house. So that garage is over some of the existing driveway.
Okay. Anything else from the board before we go to the public? Okay. We'll open this application up to comment or question from the, from the public. Anyone who would like to comment on this application? All right. And I'm scanning just for the record through those who have their cameras on. I'm not seeing any hands raised and nobody's coming up. So Rich, you comfortable closing this application?
Jim and Kathy, I am. Are you? You're muted.
Yeah, Mr. Blewett's speaking, but he's on
I'm sorry. This is Jim and, and my wife Kathy. We, my wife and I have lived here for 32 years and is that we would try to go for a garage on the side of the house for 32 years as we grow fonder and older and so on. It sure would be nice to have our, our cars covered so we could not endure all the snow that we get along this way. And the other thing is too, when the, the structure that we're asking for is, is that we're going to ask to put a laundry room in there. That'll help my wife. Have troubles with her knees and so on, so we can eliminate the use of going up and downstairs a little bit. So that's, that's kind of the backing, our thoughts of why we wanted that there. So we hope that we provided enough here. So we'll see how, how everything works out.
My only question is, if we, if this were to be moved towards the back of the house, they're still going to run into setback issues. Am I correct on that?
Oh, yeah.
They've gone as far as they could go on the back.
Yes.
You'll notice from the picture that the neighbors are closer to the road than we are.
Yeah.
And that also shows the wide open space there along the property line.
Well, the, the layout of the lot in itself presents a lot of challenges, I'm, I'm sure. And so, and then there's, obviously there's another driveway. So I was like confused a little bit when I drove by with the other driveway going up behind your house, too. There's not a lot of room in there.
Right.
So is that, that's the other property? Okay, got it. Yeah. So you got a, sort of like a flag lot behind you, right?
Well, if there's nothing else on this application, we'll go ahead and close. And we'll move on to our next application. This is for a property at 2970 County Road 10. The owner is seeking an area variance to permit a second lot to front on two public roadways for a subdivision of parcel.
Terrence, I'm on. If you're ready for it?
Yes, go ahead.
Greg Westbrook speaking, town of Canadega. We own the property at County Road 2970, property that we acquired approximately nine years ago. And we've been successful in turning a vacant lot into a, a productive lot by putting a solar farm up first, then putting some mini storage in the front. And the remaining parcels are the corner lot with the home and this other parcel that's a little odd shaped, but has utility in its backside to the, to the west. And it's got a, it's got a chunk of land out there, about 11 acres out there. And for the viability of people that are interested in that lot, they want access to, and not easement access, but access to the utilities that are available on County Road 10. the utilities that are available on County Road ten. Specifically, water in this case, gas is also there. Sewer is not yet there. We anticipate that it will be. I meet on an annual basis with the sewer, Ontario County Sewer Department. We got some new leadership there now, and I continue to be fairly vocal with the observation that this was classified as industrial land, it's now a mixed-use overlay land, and optimum benefit to the owner comes about as a result of having full utilities in an industrial zone. It's very unusual to have an area zoned industrial with no sewer. So, that's a debate that will continue as time goes on. But we'd like the consideration for the access to, unencumbered access to County Road ten utilities is the reason that's driving the request.
Okay, thank you, Greg. What questions we have from the board on this application? Okay, not hearing any. I do have a question for Chris Jensen. Chris, I just want, think it'd be helpful for the board to walk us through your zoning law determination about a parcel fronting on two roadways.
It's simply a section of the subdivision law that is put in place, so there's not two driveways off, but based on his discussion, it looks like it's just utilities from the one and access from the other.
Okay. So, I'm trying to understand the rationale for that. Normally, you know, within the code, at least for residential parcels, we're fairly familiar with this, there's a limit that you get one road cut, not two driveways. Is it the same for this parcel, is what you're saying? That's why that provision's there?
It's a generic section of the code that says, "A lot shall not front on two roadways." The rationale behind it, I, I do not know.
Okay, great.
Terry, may I comment?
Oh, yeah, of course, Greg.
So, my question was the same, Terrence, you know, a number of weeks ago. Trying to understand what drove this to a request for a variance, and to the best of my knowledge, I've not been able to determine what was the thinking behind this law, right? And I can understand it in subdivisions, you don't wanna have it. But this is an industrial M U O site, right? So, it's kind of, I'll just say, I'll just call it politely from all parties, weird, right? Not wrong or right, but just weird. And, you know, I don't understand at all the encumbrances that, that, that I'm trying to overcome here, because there aren't any to overcome, so. The lot is the lot.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions from the board before I go to the public?
Well, my only question was very, I hate to put Chris on the, on the spot, but from a, from his perspective, this doesn't look like, or I'm not gonna put words in his mouth. I'd like to know if, if he thinks that this is, is a problem for the town, if we were to grant this variance.
I mean, I could render an opinion.
That's all I'm asking for.
I think this code is a section that's for subdivisions, having twisting roads through it, having a rough, a house lot fronting on two roads, like if it was like Islanda and County Route sixteen or something like that. But I have to go by how the code's written, so I had to write the determination. It, it's up to the Z D B A to make the determination, whether or not.
I'm not trying to throw it in your lap. I'm just trying to get your, your general opinion. It is, it's not your responsibility, and I understand that, but I, from my perspective, it doesn't look like it's an issue, but I thought if there's something I'm missing, you would certainly tell me.
I would say, there's nothing you're missing, and we have to look into this section of code and what the purpose of it was.
Yeah, I think your, your question is well there, because in the fifteen years or so I've been doing this, I've never seen one like this, a request like this.
It's generally applied to residential subdivisions, frequently in a industrial or commercial type situation. You want double frontage for, through access. This is, I think, meant to apply to residential subdivisions.
Well, and like, and in this case, too, I mean, obviously, that's why we're around, right? I mean, this is kind of a unique, unique scenario, so. You know, if we were to vote in favor, we, we at least, this is a different parcel compared to what we've come across.
Chris, that was basically, what are we missing? That's all it was.
Right.
I would also add that, no matter what the outcome is, I think we need to refer this to the ordinance committee to investigate. There may be a, a language issue with regarding the original intent.
There you go. You've got material for your next meeting, right, Bob?
Absolutely right.
I was gonna say, our, our board does have representation on that.
Yes.
We should have an in.
Yeah.
All right, well, I don't know that we really need to belabor it. I'll just quickly go to the audience if there's anyone that does have a comment on this application. No? Okay. This is one where I guess, maybe it's unfortunate that it had to come this far, but you comfortable closing?
Yes, I am.
All right, well, that will close. We'll go to our next application. This is for a property that's located at thirty-eight fifty County Road sixteen. The request is for an area variance for the placement of an accessory structure on a parcel when only one is permitted. And this is in the R L D zoning district. So, Mr. or Mrs. Quinn? Or, excuse me, Mrs. and Mrs. Smith?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
All right, so Tom is going to talk to you, but is, can I share my screen? Is that possible to show you some things we put together?
Generally, we're pretty hesitant about allowing people to share screens. There's been a little bit of issues within the town. But we can see the site plan. If you just wanna walk us through it, I'm sure we can follow along.
Sure, can everybody hear me? This is Tom.
Sure.
All right. So, we're proposing to store, to create a ten-by-ten storage shed and locate in the back corner of the lot, so in compliance with the size, in compliance with the setbacks. The property does not have an attached garage. And the, we're here for the variance because across the street of County, on County Road sixteen, there's a small structure. It's about twenty-eight point three floor square feet on the inside of that structure. It has a small, about two-foot-wide opening. And so, that's the reason for the variance, I guess.
In that, you're saying it's, it's only twenty-eight square feet?
Yes, the structure was built, we're under the impression, based on neighbor feedback, the owners were the County Carpenter, the originally built the structure. We were under the impression, based off the water pipes going from the lake into that structure, and then the water pipes going out the back of it, underneath County Road sixteen, up into the, to the property, that that structure was originally built to pump water up to the main house.
So, it's a little pump station house?
Yes.
Yep.
Is there, but you're saying it's not in use? Any reason why you just don't take that down, and then you don't need a variance?
In order to take that down, you, you would have to reinforce County Road sixteen. The, the cost of doing that would be quite exceptional relative to this variance.
Okay.
It's essentially acting as a retaining wall. The pictures that we have, I didn't get them sent in before. We were a little late, but I did have pictures showing the, the shed and how it's basically acting as a retaining wall for County Road sixteen.
Okay.
As you, okay, so I can, I'll keep kind of walking through. There, I had a picture of the proposed shed location. It's in our backyard. There's nothing too exceptional about it.
Yeah.
The yard.
Mr. Smith, let me just ask you a couple of questions real quick. We're always interested in what is the intended use of the accessory structure, so just talk to us a little bit about that.
Yep, the, so without any outdoor storage, we, we do live there full-time. We have three kids. Our backyard is basically our storage outside. We're on the corner lot there of, of Whitefield's and County Road sixteen, so we are storing our riding lawnmower, the kids' power wheels, toys, a little wagon for the mower, you know, extension ladders that I can't fit in, in, in the house. So, it's intended for lawn equipment, all that, you know, kids' toys, to get it out from being stored outside, under the elements.
Okay. I think that's pretty straightforward. What questions do we have from the board on this application?
Is, I guess, my only question, is there another location in the yard you can move it, so it's, you know, what? I have seen the property. I know that it, it's elevated. You know, is there any other area you could put it?
The, the proposed shed?
Yeah.
Well, that's not gonna change the variance, is it?
No.
It won't. Oh, yeah, 'cause of the, oh, gotcha.
Yeah, this is just, you're allowed one in that little pump house retaining wall slash retaining wall is there, one. So, now that they want to have a, you know, place to put the lawnmower and power wheels and whatever, they need a variance.
So, Terrence, that's, that's considered an accessory, the pump house?
Yes, because it's a structure, it's got walls and a roof, and is not attached to the dwelling. If I understand it right, Chris, right, you're the, you're the co-fulfiller officer.
I don't believe it's a pump house anymore. It can be used for storage.
Well, let's, we need to figure that out, then. What is it, Mr. Smith? What is in there?
So, the pump is removed right now. So, right now, it has life jackets, basically.
So, Terrence, like, and Chris, maybe, I mean, you know, it's got, it's got a walls, it's got a roof. I mean, what if they changed that? I mean, I know you don't wanna tear it down, but I don't know. I mean, that's kind of a weird, you know, it's a, it's a weird location for a pump house or storage, I guess, I don't know.
In the past, we've been pretty strict on the number of accessory structures that are allowed in the R L D that's only there to prevent clutter along the lake. We've denied plenty of applications where people are asking for a second accessory structure. A little bit more inclined on this application, thinking that it was a pump house, but if it's really being used as an accessory structure, Mr. Smith, so that, that's something that may change at least my perspective on this.
You're, you're talking about twenty-eight square feet. You're talking about a four-by-seven building.
This mall.
Yeah, and we just granted two accessory structures last month, two weeks ago, in the R L D.
Yep.
That wasn't in the R L D.
It wasn't on County Road sixteen? I'm sorry. Okay, you're right.
And the, the adjacent property owner is asking for the same thing, two accessory structures.
I think that's unfair to mention. He officially withdrew his application.
We did speak to our neighbors. I'm sorry that we weren't able to share our screen presentation to be able to show you visually how the, the retaining wall looks, and as well as our sheet of speaking with neighbors who all said that they were not opposed to us doing this. If, if able, I can always submit this, our presentation to, to you following this meeting.
Yeah, that, that might be helpful.
Yeah. I think it highlights a bit the fact that the old pump house down by the lake is also quite small, so I think Tom mentioned, you know, it's a two-foot opening, so it's not a substitute for, for storage to what we are seeking, and the fact that, I think he also mentioned that we have no garage here on this property.
We looked at the possibility of creating a, we understand the code allows one detached garage. The driveway coming off of County Road sixteen, of course, goes up a hill. It, it ends on our basement level. And then there's two sets of stairs to get up to the main level of the house. So, the driveway does not actually connect into the backyard. In order to do that, again, we'd have to undertake a massive excavation project, or we would have to create a driveway across the front of the house, in between the two houses, which I'm not even sure would be allowed with setbacks, and then create a driveway space into the backyard. We would be more than joyous with the decision to allow the second accessory structure, basically in lieu or, or in substitution of the allowable detached garage, if that is allowed, because, again, we don't have a, an ability really to do that, or if we did, it would be a much more substantial project and much more lot coverage in order to build, what we, build a bigger structure to house a vehicle and to connect it to the driveway.
I like to ask maybe a naive question. The, I understand the, the importance, the value of a retaining wall and the, and the expense. Is there, again, pardon me for, you know, asking, asking a simple question that, you know, I'm wondering if you can maintain the retaining wall, but render the original shed useless as a shed? Can it still, could, is it, would it be possible at not too much expense to maintain the character of the retaining wall? And that twenty-eight square feet does, would not be considered at all a shed? Could that, could something, is something like that even possible?
Do, Mr. Hillard, are, do you mean by that question, like, you take the roof off of it or something?
Yes.
And, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's a cement roof. I don't know, so, I mean, anyone who's, if you can visualize the, the slope of the road, I, I don't think that we're opposed to looking at any options. I think it's that fear of all the erosion and how close the road is. You know, we're talking about a matter of a foot or two, enough room for a shrub before you're coming down the slope. So, potentially, I just don't know how much that, that roof is also holding up part of this road.
Okay, well, that wouldn't mean it's, you guys, you, obviously, I, you need a shed, a real shed. But from our, my point of view, when we write this, our findings, if, if we allow two sheds without, you know, we are opening a door that we, we won't be able to close in the R L D, and
I, I think.
Wiggle room here.
We understand and appreciate the, that situation, and what our research of reading the code and looking through things and finding the fact that this shed, or the structure, the pump house down by the lake was small enough that, you know, typically, nothing would be needed to construct just that small structure, we're hoping is a different scenario than what you've said before, 'cause I understand what you're saying, that you, the precedence and what you've done or will have to do in the future in this district are important. I think the size of these, the structure on the other side of the road sets it apart from what you see when you see the examples of others that are up or trying to go up, or what have you along this district.
Well, so, again, an alternative that we did explore was the detached garage. I cannot find the code that requires it to be connected to a driveway, but Chris did an email tell me that it has to have access to a driveway. We do have a right-of-way coming into the back of the yard through the adjacent property. We can get vehicles into the backyard. There was an old stone driveway that's overgrown, but we can get vehicles access in there. So, I'm just, I'm under the impression, based on that advisement, that really, we, we can't, it would be a very significant project to, to add the driveway. If we do not need a driveway attached to this detached garage, I'm more than willing to build a much larger accessory Accessory or detached garage in that place. But again, that's a more substantial project. It's a more, you know, there's more lot coverage. I don't necessarily need that big of a space, but based on, on what we can find in the code, that, that does seem like an alternative, although. More substantial alternative.
I think it also opens you up to other variances too anyways from, because with two, two driveways and whatnot, so.
Well, what I, I would need to. I don't know how, I guess I would have to apply for a detached garage and, and understand where in the code access to a driveway is required.
Yeah, you, you would need a driveway, otherwise it's just an accessory structure, but.
If I can store a vehicle in it and it doesn't require a driveway in the code, that's where I'm. I can. So.
Yeah, you can store vehicles and accessory structures.
Okay, so even though that's not in the code, that is. How it's being enforced.
Yeah, and so let's just talk a little bit, I mean. Your, your lakeside accessory structure, this pump house. Talk to me a little bit about the retaining wall aspect of this. I mean, it's relatively small in comparison with your road frontage. 28 square feet. Saying it's a significant issue to remove that and reinforce the bank over that small amount of space?
I'm not, I'm not an expert on that. I haven't pursued that. It appears that doing anything along the lake is, is a significant undertaking if we replace that retaining wall, so. Being how close it is to County Road 16, that, that to me seems like a much more significant request. It is a, you know, concrete cinder block construction. And it has over the years. You know. Well, it's, it's, yeah, it's concrete and cinder blocks, so it's. Who knows how much it's, it's actually holding up and what would happen if, if it was removed. And it's retaining on three sides as well. The front side is open, but all three sides are built up. Probably covering, well, the back is, I would say 90% retaining earth. And the two sidewalls are easily more than 50% retaining earth. So it's a pretty significant. Project to remove it and, and maintain that. Maintain the land, I would imagine.
All right, what other questions from the board on this application?
I'm just wondering what Chip would say about this as far as, is Chip here? I don't even, but. He knows this property better than anybody and all these properties down through there. I can understand if this was a 10 by 10 or a 10 by 12. Where somebody was using to, you know, to change clothes, you know, to come in off the lake, but this is a four by six building.
Yeah, I actually, we kept our, when we lived on Wifers Road, we kept our boat down at the carpenters. For many years, I wonder where the crane went. The crane Connie had there to, to put his boat in and out. That, as I recall, that, you know, it's really like a, it's bunkered in there really, and it's not, you know. It doesn't stick up over anything. I, I think to make them take that out just to get a 10 foot by 10 foot shed in the back. Really puts them through and really an unnecessary amount of. Of digging, having to put in more retaining walls. I think that, that thing itself. I don't think there'd be any way you could take it out without having to put in another retaining wall. That's just disrupting things down there more than I think. Would ought to be required of them.
Well, what's the worst that could happen to County Road 16?
Hey, I'm all for blocking making it a one-way road. Right in front of our house.
All right, let's open it to the audience if there's any questions on this application.
So this is Greg Westbrook.
Yes, Greg, former neighbor to this parcel.
Well, former owner. Of this parcel, so I'm gonna.
I thought Cory had this one, maybe my memory is wrong on.
Your memory is incorrect, okay? So like. Dr. Sailor, you know, I had the joy of working with Connie Carpenter back in the. Early 90s as related to getting water from Wifers Road heading south. As we were all concerned about the zebra mussels at the time. And then fortunately, I bought the lot next to his and put up our, our home on the lake. And Connie built a bunker. My personal advice, it's only personal, it's not professional, to both Tom and Quinn. Is to put the freaking pump back in. It's a pump house. It's not an accessory structure. Don't apply for a variance. That's my personal advice, because that's what it is. It's a pump house. You know, they may have one life jacket in there, because that's all that fits. Dr. Sailor, you can attest to, I don't know, he had a sailboat down there, which I think you did, you know? And Connie would, you know, use that as a, as a physical presence to jam stuff in for the winter time. He wanted his wife to see all the stuff that he bought. So it was kind of like a cave for him, right? And it would be insane to have them take that down. I think it's much easier to say that they put a one horsepower pump in there, it retains its pump house status, it's not an accessory structure. They have the full permission to put the accessory structure in the back. They don't have to apply for a variance. That's what I would do. Again, unprofessional opinion, neighborly opinion. And I hope the board shows some, some. Compassion to this task, because this one is not caused by the Smiths at all, and there's an easy way out. And it works for the board and it works for them. Let's just stop talking about a variance here at all.
We're, we're always compassionate, what do you, you know?
I know. I'm talking about Terrence primarily.
I, I always appreciate advice from Greg. I, you know, we want to be truthful with how that, that structure is used right now. When we bought the property, the floor was basically rotten. We do have young kids and nieces and nephews that changed down there, so the floor has, new piece of plywood has been put down. I really didn't want to tear it all out and reconnect the pump for this, especially seeing how, again, I couldn't find any code that references. If it's a pump house, that it's allowed, it would still have to go through some sort of interpretation, so. This is where we're at now, you know, disclosing the, the whole truth.
Yeah, so the whole truth is there are three life jackets, because we have three kids. But if you're, if you're over four feet tall, you really can't go in there and do, move around without running into a wall. But thank you, Dr. Sailor and Mr. Westbrook for sharing, for sharing those stories about this property. I know this is not the point of this meeting, but it's, it's nice to hear the stories of the person who built this, because we cherish those. So thank you for sharing those while you were talking.
All right, do we have any other comments from anyone in the audience on this application?
I can get my whole family in here, but I won't, okay, so.
All right, any other questions or comments from anyone on the board?
Mr. Robinson, we do have to act on the waiver requests during decisions and stuff.
What is the waiver request? Let's see, I don't know if I saw that before.
Requesting a waiver for a professionally prepared plan in the town site. A professionally prepared plan wouldn't be required, because it doesn't really need. It means all the setbacks, they're not asking for a variance for any setbacks or exact locations or anything. They're asking for two structures.
I don't think we ever had this before, have we, Terrence?
I don't recall it.
Yeah.
I don't think such a.
Okay. Well, hearing no other comment or question, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, are you comfortable closing your application?
I, I just want to offer, if you would like to see the pictures that we took, if it helps you, I don't know if I, if I say I close it, if I can then later send it to you. Because I heard you explain in the beginning that that's the end of your submission. If you feel that it would help for you, for me to email these along, any of the pictures, I can do that at your request. But otherwise, I am, I'm okay closing as long as Thomas.
Yeah, so I'm listening.
All right, so just to respond to that. Yes, when we close an application, we don't accept new information on the application. And if we close, we're almost assuredly going to vote tonight on it. It's exceedingly rare that we don't.
And that's fine by me. I think that the, the pictures aren't gonna, oh, this is, sounds silly, but the pictures aren't going to pay a better picture than what was. Reiterated by Mr. Westbrook and Dr. Sailor.
Well, with that, you know, hearing that the applicant's comfortable closing, we'll go ahead and close. Once again, 62 days to render a decision, but it takes custom to vote the same evening for applications.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll begin our deliberations just in same order that we heard applications. We'll begin with 4611 dual road. My, my view on this, just to kick this off, is I think that. The planning board really is going to have. The opportunity here to put in some protections in terms of vegetative screening and, you know, shoring up the. The earth between this structure and the stream, but in terms of our zoning purview, I don't have a lot of issue with this one.
On this one.
Sorry, there are two people talking. I couldn't make that out. Say that again?
I apologize, Terrence. Chris Jensen, planning boards are, it's simply an accessory structure in a residential network or zoning district.
So just clarify, Chris, you're saying that the planning board is not going to look at this?
They are not going to look at this.
Okay. I guess I misunderstood that.
I think it was suggested that he plant, you know, plantings around the stream or something along.
Like you said, that was a DEC, I think that was.
Yeah.
Said it as well. I liked their comments on this one.
The, the ECB, I wrote down, they wanted a, they said robust soil erosion control is needed. And they were mentioning a 10-foot wide buffer, including trees and/or shrubs. Mr. Beckwith seemed to be on board with that. So if we were to. Vote yes on this, I, we could put that in with the conditions, I suppose.
Yeah, just, I always, my own personal preference is I don't like putting in conditions that. The town then has, you know, in theory, some obligation to go enforce, you know, about, well, what's going to be planted and when, and I, I get what you're saying. You know, I'm of the same mind. I, I really like the ECB comments. That's why I was hoping that the planning board might address it, but I guess it does sit with us.
It looked like them in the pictures that already down at stream level, there are trees and a lot of growth already there. So it's really just on the slope that, you know, we could certainly recommend that that be, you know, looked at.
Chris has kind of offered a reasonable assurance that the, the building is far and above high enough. Where it's not going to be washed away by the stream. That to me is, is important, so that's where I am.
Yep. All right, well, why don't you call vote on this, Chris? We have proposed decision sheets, Chris, or do you want me to go through that?
Here we go. Applicant is requesting a 62-foot setback from a water course when 100 foot is the max minimum. Shall the applicant be granted a 38-foot area variance for a setback from a water course? Bob?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
All right, now.
We should, we should ask if you permit the variant, or not the variants, for the waiver request from a professionally prepared plan. Or, no, sorry, that's the wrong one. I'll, I'll just be quiet.
That's fine, Chris, yeah, that, that's the, the Smiths, but yeah, we'll get there. Remind us when we get there, because I'll forget that. All right, for our decision, the board's decision is based on the drawings and information provided at the public hearing held on June 15th, 2021. And on the submission dates made to the town development office prior to the, to the public hearing. The board has determined that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or the community, therefore the variance is granted. This variance will not change the character of the neighborhood. It is a proposed. Proposed detached garage 60 feet from a water stream. The proposed detached garage is at a significant elevation above the stream, imposes no risk of being washed away by the stream. There's a tree line along the stream, and the applicant has indicated that he is willing to follow the recommendations. Of the environmental conservation board and put additional vegetative. Screening between the stream and the structure. Bob, does that cover enough?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. As opposed to an actual condition?
Yeah, I don't, not interested in that. I think we take our neighbors at their word, and I think what. Mr. Beckwith pledged was just fine, and I don't think we need any more teeth in that.
They put cell fence up and they, they vegetate afterwards through the department development.
Okay, great. I also like to just put that the location of other structures and topography and general site plan. Of the parcel limit the location for this structure. And then we'll put two conditions on there, our standard conditions. Which are that the variance grant is specific to the most recent plan submitted to the ZBA, and any change in the plan will invalidate the variance. And number two, the variance is conditioned on building permits being issued one, within one year of the date the variance is, is granted. And failure to obtain building permits within one year shall invalidate the variance. Does anybody else have any additional findings of fact they'd like to add to that decision? Okay, we'll move on to 4495 Davidson Landing. You know, I, I'll just kick it off, I guess. I think that this is a really good outcome. I, I think it's just good all around, the changes that were made, it's much more in line with code. I don't really have any issue with this project at this point.
I don't either. They did quite a bit. They revised quite a bit, and I think they, you know, made a good effort last time. Now it's even better, so.
Okay.
Personally.
Chip, Bob, Dave, any other discussion you want to have? Are you ready to vote?
I, I welcome it. I think it's a beautiful home to, to make our town look even better.
I think it was an improvement to, to carry this on, and they did, they, they even made it better, so, in my mind, so. Kudos to them.
Great. All right, Chris, if you would call vote on this application?
Yeah, I'm trying to find the project. Here we go. Applicant is requesting an area variance for building coverage. This is an old sheet. Okay.
Yeah, the percentages have changed, right?
Yeah, you can just read it off that, but with the current percentage, Chris, which is 16.9.
Yeah, they're looking for a 1.9% max building coverage variance.
Yep.
Applicant is requesting area variance for a building coverage of.
1.6.
16.9% when 15% is the maximum building coverage allowable. They're asking for a 1.9% building coverage variance. Shall the applicant be granted a 1.9% variance for building coverage when 15% is the maximum? Mr. Hilliard?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
La Boy?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes. All right, the board's decision is based on the descriptions, drawings, and information provided at the public hearing. All right, the board's decision is based on the descriptions, drawings, and information provided at the public hearing on fifteen twenty twenty-one. And on the other submissions and information provided to the town development office prior to the public hearing. The board has determined that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community, therefore the variance is granted. The variance is considered to be minimal in the eyes of the zoning board of appeals. It's not considered to be a substantial variance because the one point nine percent increase over the allowable building coverage is attributable to a natural. Is it correct, Chris, to call it grass roof? Or what's the exact phrase for that?
Green roof?
Green roof. Okay, that's.
A vegetated green roof which acts as a normal grass wood.
Okay. So we'll say that that one point nine percent increase over the allowable building coverage is attributable to a natural vegetative roof that will have normal absorption properties similar to sod. The variance is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The board has determined that there be no adverse environmental impact from the variance. The board recognizes the removal of other current structures in order to reduce building coverage to the minimal amount necessary. Conditions that will be imposed, the variance grant is specific to the most recent plans submitted to the zoning board of appeals, and any change in the plan shall invalidate the variance. And the variance is conditioned on building permits being issued within one year of the date the variance is granted. Failure to obtain building permits within one year shall invalidate the variance. Does anyone on the board have any any other findings of fact they'd like to add? No? Okay. We'll continue down our list. Thirty-five ninety-two Middle Cheshire Road. This is the Blueitts. Between the side and front setback variance for their garage.
This is a challenged property, I think. And anyway, I I don't see why I don't see the issue personally, but.
I don't either. I have no no concerns with this proposal.
Yeah. What what who who did that lot? Who constructed? It's quite the shape.
Yeah, it is unique for sure.
Yeah.
It's not substantial in view of this in view of the lot. I think it's. I don't think it's going to affect the neighbors. I think it's they should have a they they should be able to have a garage if they want one.
Right.
Well, Chris Jensen, if you would be kind enough to call vote on this?
Applicant is requesting a sixteen-foot side setback when twenty-five foot is required. Applicant is requesting twenty-five point six for primary structure addition when sixty footer is required for front setback. Should I break it into two votes or one?
Just do it as one.
Okay, shall the applicant be granted a nine-foot side setback area variance? And shall the F can be granted a thirty-four point four foot side set or primary structure front setback? Let's see. Bob?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes. So the board's decision is based on the descriptions, drawings, and information provided at the public hearing on June fifteen twenty twenty-one and other information submitted to the town planning or town development office prior to the public hearing. The board has determined that the detriment to the neighborhood or community that the, excuse me, the board has determined that the benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the neighborhood or community, and therefore the variance is granted. The board's decision is based upon the following findings of fact, based upon information submitted at the public hearing. This variance is not substantial. It will bring a an attached garage no closer to the road frontage than the patio. There are similar homes in the vicinity with closer, or I should say with 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 smaller front setbacks. The board has determined that there will be no adverse change to the character of the neighborhood or any environmental concerns with this project. The board has also found that the property to the south will not be adversely impacted as there's no structure on directly south of the proposed garage, but rather open space in a driveway. Any other findings of fact that any members of the board would like to add? No? Okay. And then in in closing, we'll impose our two standard conditions that the variance is specific to the plans presented to the Z B A, and any change in those plans invalidates the variance. And the variance is conditioned on building permits being issued within one year of the date the variance is granted. Next, we have property located at twenty-nine seventy County Road ten. And based on the public hearing, I'm not sure we need too much discussion on this. It sounds like odd code provision, particularly when applied to a a parcel like this in the M U O that's really more for industrial use. So unless anyone wants to have any discussion, I say we go to a vote.
What about?
All right, go ahead, Chris.
Applicant is requesting to have parcel frontage on two public roadways. Shall the applicant be granted an area variance to have parcel frontage on two public roadways? Bob?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes. Okay, let's go to our decision here.
I'd like to, Terrence, ask Chris to email Carrie Davis with the code citation so we can work on this with the ordinance committee.
Perfect.
Will do.
Okay, the board's decision is based on the descriptions, drawings, and information provided during the public hearing on June fifteen twenty twenty-one as well as other information submitted to the town's development office in advance of the public hearing. The board has determined that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment, any detriment to the neighborhood or community, and therefore the variance is granted. The board's decision is based upon the facts and information presented during the public hearing, and the board makes the following findings of fact. First is that this variance will not change the character of the neighborhood. This is a parcel located in a mixed-use overlay district. It is intended for mixed uses, including industrial uses. This is a parcel that's not being proposed as part of a residential subdivision. And the board has determined that the road access onto County Road ten is essential for utilities needed for the parcel. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add on the findings of fact piece for this application? Okay. And then we'll impose the two standard conditions, which is that the variance grant is specific to the plans presented to the zoning board of appeals. And that any change or excuse me, that a change invalidates the variance. And the variance is conditioned on building permits being issued within one year of the date the variance is granted. Okay, our final application for this evening.
I'm sorry, I've got to interrupt, Terrence.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, there's no plan to build on it, so I don't know what that last little sentence was. Building permits will not be issued because I'm not building on it. There's no development plans.
Okay, and then that's a fair point. That's just a standard condition we put.
I noticed. I heard you say it four times, so.
Yeah, we can remove that one. So just our one standard condition. Okay, going on, this is County Road sixteen for the Smiths, which we were just discussing.
I don't have any problem with this the way it is.
I I think we have, I mean, again, it's it's a unique parcel, right? I mean, there's he I mean, that pump house, can you really call that an accessory? I mean, I know you can, but I mean, it's you're never going to store anything in there, and it's kind of comes with its own challenges, right? So repairing that or even trying to improve upon that actually creates further hardship for the, you know, the applicant, so. I think they have a, you know. I think they have a valid proposal for the new shed.
I generally agree with Terrence on the on the, you know, limitations of accessory structures. I'm the only one that voted against forty-seven sixty-four, and that's not even in the R L D. But I think in this case, I agree with Kelly. I don't think it really the the one on the lake doesn't really qualify and help them as far as an accessory structure for somebody that's got three kids. Terrence doesn't understand what it's like to have a lot of kids.
Well, not even take the kids out. I mean, it's still, what are you going to do with that thing? You know, there's nothing you can do with it, so.
But that's my opinion. I just think that, you know, they have they should have the ability to put an accessory structure, and I don't think that this one on the lake is helping them that much, but that's my opinion.
So I just have a couple of questions for Chris Jensen in terms of expansion of prior nonconformities. So if we approve a second accessory structure here, and let's say in the future, whether these property owners or another property owner down the road wants to expand the accessory structure on the lake. Are am I correct in in thinking that they're going to be limited to what is the current footprint? Or does the variance for two accessory structures allow them to have another accessory structure? That's, you know, ten by ten?
You're because if you if you give the variance, it's based on this plan that you see in front of them, that any expansion of that would be different from this plan and would require it would be an increase in the degree of nonconformance. So, yes, they would go back for a variance.
Okay.
Actually, I'm sorry, I actually like Greg's idea, though, you know, I mean, why isn't there a pump in there? Turn it into a pump house, and would it still be considered?
It would. It would still be considered an accessory structure.
Right.
For not for storage, not for this, and then you would use that when granting a variance, so it's not you cannot be used for storage, and they would be a need one kind of thing, but yes.
Right. Okay.
Are we really trying to encourage loopholes?
I know.
I I'm I, you know, would, I understand what they want to do when it's valid, but I I feel like our hands are going to be tied in the future. I'm having difficulty with this. And I mean, they the the so-called shed on the lake is so small. Now, could that be an issue? Could it be a pump house? Is that? I'm not sure. I'd like to see this happen, but I'm having trouble voting yes for this because I just feel that we unless we're really great with the language here, I really feel like we're opening a door. And that bothers me.
Well, isn't the variance procedure here to allow people to do something that, I mean, this is a pretty different situation? And I and I think that to me is what if if this was just a matter of of another accessory structure or a dressing house on the on the lake, I would be agreeing with you, Bob, but this thing is this is so much different. I think we've had a couple of people, you know, basically state that that is the fact. I I think that the question to me, I agree with Kelly. I think they should have a right to have a place to store their riding lawnmower and and up in their yard, and that's really what this is about to me.
That, I mean, and that parcel, I mean, honestly, that lake parcel, but it's, you know, it's not like you could put anything else on it anyway. I don't think, you know, it's kind of small, so.
Yeah, I I understand everyone's comments, and I agree with everyone, you know, to your question, Bob, about whether we're basically opening up issues. I think that there is a decision that we can that we can craft that would limit any potential future argument, you know, that we've created a a certain standard here of allowing second accessory structures in the R L D, because this one does have a lot of unique circumstances to it.
Baggage.
Yeah, I mean, we can we can indicate the size of the other structure. We can indicate very limited use even for storage. And the fact that it's structurally part of the the road, I think that's, you know, another.
Yeah, that's definitely unique to the to this parcel, right, Chip? I mean, it's literally holding the road together.
What if the applicant had said it's an old, you know, structure on the water, and if it would help our our application, we won't use it to put our life jackets in or whatever. I mean, it sounds like the use is very limited. But if they had said, we won't even use that, it's it is a structure, but it is it is not in use. Would that have made a difference?
I don't think so. I mean, honestly, because you if you think about it, Bob, I mean, if they sold and, you know, who's to say the next people wouldn't use it, right? I mean.
Okay.
My opinion.
It'd be silly to have a structure down there and not at least use it for a few life jackets.
Well, I'm just I'm searching for language and and a level of comfort. I I what I'm kind of I'm trying to say is I want to vote yes, but I'm still I still have these reservations. But you people, in in terms of what you're saying, is helping me, you know, move move a little bit.
All right, well, why don't we call a vote on this, Chris?
Making me dizzy, Chris.
Applicant is requesting an area variance for a second accessory structure. Shall the applicant be granted an area variance for a second accessory structure? Bob?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, the board's decision is based on the descriptions and drawings provided at the public hearing on June fifteen twenty twenty-one and other information provided to the town development office prior to the public hearing. The board has determined that the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community, and therefore the variance is granted. The board's decision is based upon the following findings of facts based off the information presented during the public hearing. First is that the existing accessory structure is a was built as a pump house to bring water from the lake. It is just correcting Chris Jensen, my memory is off. It's twenty-eight square feet, right?
Yeah, it's only about four foot by seven foot.
Okay. If if I'm off on that exact number, you can correct it in the decision, but it it's a small, a minimally small structure of twenty-eight square feet. It's built out of cinder block and is integral to the retaining, you may need to help me on the language, Chris, but the basically the retaining wall aspect of the of the lake, the lakeside portion of the parcel, and removing it would destabilize the road, potentially destabilize County Road sixteen. The accessory structure on the lake side of the parcel is short in height and essentially offers no meaningful storage. The proposed accessory structure on the The proposed accessory structure on the upland portion of the parcel will be removed from the road frontage. It will be tucked back into the northwest corner of the parcel so that its visibility from the road or the lake will be minimized. Is there any other findings of fact that anyone would like to add on this one to in order to distinguish it from future applications? No? Okay.
I just want to maybe the size of it is not that substantial. It's certainly, all of it's within the code, and I think you said it best, i- it's out of the, it's out of the view and the purview of the public, so it's.
So we'll add that that statement made by Dave, which is that the proposed accessory structure on the upland parcel is within within code meets all setback requirements. I think that that's good. And then we'll impose our standard two conditions, which is that the variance is granted specific to the most recent plan submitted to the zoning board of appeals, and any change in the plan shall invalidate the variance. And on that one, I want to add specific language as follows. That the variance is granted specifically and conditioned upon the plan which shows the current lakeside accessory structure. Any modification to that proposed structure in terms of expansion of height, width, or size will invalidate this variance. And secondly, the variance is conditioned on building permits being issued within one year of the date the variance is granted. Failure to obtain building permits within one year shall invalidate the variance. Is the board comfortable with those with that condition, that sort of expanded condition?
Terrence, is it really that it would invalidate this variance, or is it that it would require another variance?
Well, we can do both ways. I was wanting, we normally say that any change to the plan will invalidate the variance. So I wanted to make sure that that was specifically in there that our plan includes the proposed or the current accessory structure, excuse me. And any change in that is a change to the plan which validates the variance. The flip side to what you're saying, Chip, is also true, is that you can't expand that lawfully without getting a variance.
Right.
But you also state that you accept the waiver request for a professionally prepared plan?
Yeah, and and I'm going to make a motion on that, just so we have a vote on the record. I move that we accept the waiver request for this application. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay. See, I told you I was going to forget that, Chris.
I forgot it, too.
Thanks. Okay, moving on now, just to a little bit of board business. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from our June first meeting, which was actually our May meeting, but just had to be rescheduled due to technology issues?
So move.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyways. Okay. Chris, do you have anything you need to review with us from the town board?
Nope, nothing at this time.
Okay. Anything from the ordinance committee?
No, but I think next time I'll have you know, some interesting updates.
Okay, great. Thanks, Bob. Chris, do you have anything you'd like to review with us in anticipation of our July meeting?
No, we'll refer the the request for the double frontage to put that in front of the ordinance committee as well.
Okay. All right, then I'll make a motion at seven thirty-four that we adjourn and reconvene in July.
A second.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, with that, the meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Hope you all have a great.
Thank you.